And we're back. All right. Welcome to this 13th regular meeting of the 74th term of the Baltimore City Council is now called to order. Tonight's invocation will be provided by Pastor Mark James. Pastor James, please take it away.
Good evening and let everyone bow their heads. Creator and sustainer of all life. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to come and to release the blessing for this meeting. We pray, Lord, that you would take in hand. Let your mighty arm and your hand of grace rest heavy upon these as they have gathered to deliberate and make decisions concerning the destiny of this city. Bless them with the kind of unity that they had on last week. Bless them to be able to see what they haven't seen, hear what they haven't heard, and to perceive what they haven't perceived for the benefit and the betterment of our great city. We give you praise, we give you honor, and we thank you. Hallelujah and amen.
Thank you, Pastor James. We will now recite the Pledge of Allegiance led by our local Marine, Councilman Blanchard.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The clerk will now call the roll of the members. Madam Clerk.
Parker, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Gray, Bullock, Porter, Blanchard, Jones, Glover, Ramos, Cohen.
Here. Thank you, Madam Clerk. We will now proceed with the adoption of the journals.
Mr. President, the journals for the July 21st meeting proceedings are in members' inboxes.
Without objection, the journals will be adopted. Hearing none, the journals are adopted. Bill signed by the mayor can be found on page two of the agenda. We now move on to bills being introduced. Madam Clerk.
City Council Bill 25-0087, eviction channels, time period to reclaim, for the purpose of requiring a landlord to retain a tenant's property for a specified period of time under certain circumstances, requiring a certain notice be provided to a tenant upon eviction, and generally relating to eviction and a tenant's right to reclaim personal property. Lead sponsor Torrance, co-sponsors Middleton, Gray, Bullock, Blanchard, Ramos.
Councilman Torrance, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. This bill is both needed and technical as we, the City of Baltimore lost top in versus the City of Baltimore, in which the court said that we must provide a reclamation period for all actual evictions. So this actually puts in a 10-day notice for a person, if you are facing eviction, your landlord will hold those items for 10 days. After that 10 days, if you do not show up for it, they're able to dispose of it. Anything beyond that 10 days, you have to pay a reasonable surcharge for that landlord to actually hold on to those items. This allows both landlords and tenants to come to agreement on what to do with the property, not to sit someone's items out on the street, but also provides a dignity and a hardship at the same time. With that being said, I hope my colleagues will vote for it. And I'm happy to provide the actual case law that was just recently generated by the State Supreme Court, in which they gave us explicit instructions on how to do this actual law. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Torrance. This bill has been signed to the Housing and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill 25-0088, taxes, property tax.
Hang on. Please add Councilmember Porter as co-sponsor.
City Council Bill 25-0088, taxes, property tax, vacant lots and vacant properties, for the purpose of amending the special real property tax rate for vacant and abandoned property to include vacant lots, establishing a subclass of real property for vacant lots and vacant structures, applying a special real property tax rate to the subclass of real property, requiring the provision of notice of the special real property tax rate, providing for the promulgation of rules and regulations, requiring a certain annual report, defining certain terms, repealing certain sections of Ordinance 24-431 that ordained an arbitration date for the ordinance, and generally relating to the special real property vacancy tax rate levied on vacant lots and vacant structures. Lead sponsor Ramos, co-sponsors Middleton, Gray, Bullock, Blanchard, Jones.
Councilmember Ramos, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, colleagues. This legislation adds the vacant property tax to vacant lots. In 2024, after several years of debate, the General Assembly passed legislation authorizing the Baltimore City and each jurisdiction to tax vacant properties and vacant lots at a different rate. Thank you to Delegate Boyes and Senator Hayes for their incredible work to finally get this over the finish line. Last year, the City Council passed legislation, which we all co-sponsored, to add a vacant property tax to vacant structures only. The bill mandated the tax to be three times the current property tax rate for the first year and four times the rate every year after that. In addition, there was a sunset provision, and the tax would not be levied on tax bills until proper notice is provided, and not until the tax bills are sent out in July of '26. This legislation before us adds the vacant property tax to vacant lots as authorized in the state legislation. It also changes the rate to a flat four times the rate, so we're removing the three times, we're going directly to four times the rate, and removes the sunset provision, so this will keep going. The notice requirements, reporting, and July 2026 timeframe are all the same as the last bill that we passed. Frankly, with the vacancy tax, we're not going to make any money off of this. We're not using this as a revenue generator. Ultimately, the reason for vacant property tax and vacant lot tax is to incentivize the owner to do something with the property, such as rehab the vacant building or build on the lot. Alternatively, the liens will get higher than the assessed value of the property much quicker, so that we can foreclose using the in-room process. The city will then partner with community to ensure the property returns to productive use with community input. The reason we didn't include vacant lots in the first legislation last year was a concern about side lots that owners were starting to purchase and community gardens on private property, where the owner was informed and either gave permission or never responded. In addition, data on vacant lots is sometimes inaccurate, with some lots actually having buildings on them, or the buildings listed are actually gone. DHCD is conducting a survey to improve the data and find the uses on each lot. Although they said it would be completed by June, the study is ongoing. I believe we can still move forward with our legislation despite the study not being completed, and send a complete list of vacant properties and lots getting the tax to the General Assembly by December 1st, which is mandated in the state legislation. There are ways to address the side lot and community garden issue. First, DHCD could potentially develop a use permit similar to what we have for buildings. If the vacant lot has a use permit based on specific criteria, then there would not be the tax. This is all has to be worked out, since use permits are not in the code, we did not include it in this legislation. However, it can be done through regulation, and I want to thank our colleague, Mark Parker, for this idea. I'm looking forward to the discussion on this bill and working with our colleagues to complete this initiative. The vacant property tax is a huge, is going to be a big deal for us to continue our work on vacant and abandoned properties. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Ramos. This bill has been assigned to the Housing and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill 25-0089, zoning, rezoning, conditional use conversion of a single-family dwelling to two dwelling units in the R7 zoning district, 1029 West 37th Street, for the purpose of changing the zoning for the property known as 1029 West 37th Street, Block 3539, Lot 014, as outlined and read on the accompanying plat, from the R6 zoning district to the R7 zoning district, permitting, subject to certain conditions, the conversion of a single-family dwelling unit on the property to two dwelling units and providing for a special effective date. Lead sponsor Torrance.
This bill has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill 25-0090, zoning, conditional use conversion of a single-family dwelling to two dwelling units in the R7 zoning district, variance 220 North Culver Street, for the purpose of permitting, subject to certain conditions, the conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to two dwelling units in the R7 zoning district on the property known as 220 North Culver Street, Block 2275A, Lot 135, as outlined and read on the accompanying plat, granting a variance regarding certain bulk regulations, lot size, and providing for a special effective date. Lead sponsor Gray.
This bill has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill 25-0091, zoning, conditional use conversion of a single-family dwelling to four dwelling units in the R8 zoning district, variance 1425 West Fayette Street, for the purpose of permitting, subject to certain conditions, the conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to four dwelling units in the R8 zoning district on the property known as 1425 West Fayette Street, Block 0197, Lot 013, as outlined and read on the accompanying plat, granting a variance regarding certain bulk regulations, lot size, area, and providing for a special effective date. Lead sponsor Bullock.
This bill has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill 25-0092, zoning, conditional use conversion to a banquet hall in the C2 zoning district, variance 1123 West Baltimore Street, for the purpose of permitting, subject to certain conditions, the establishment, maintenance, and operation of a banquet hall on the property known as 1123 West Baltimore Street, Blocks 0217, Lot 012, in the C2 zoning district, as outlined and read on the accompanying plat, granting a variance regarding off-street parking requirements and providing for a special effective date. Lead sponsor Bullock.
This bill has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill 25-0093, zoning, Hartford Road overlay district, for the purpose of establishing the Hartford Road overlay district, delineating the boundaries of the district, creating applicable use regulations within the district, establishing bulk and yard regulations within the district, detailing other applicable standards within the district, amending certain off-street parking requirements, and generally relating to the establishment of the Hartford Road overlay district. Lead sponsor Dorsey.
This bill has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill 25-0094, sale of properties, 2840 and 2842 Sisson Street, for the purpose of authorizing the mayor and city council of Baltimore to sell, either at public or private sale, all its interests in certain properties that are located at 2840 Sisson Street, Block 3642D, Lot 006B, and 2842 Sisson Street, Block 3642D, Lot 006, and are no longer needed for public use and providing for a special effective date. Lead sponsor, council president, on behalf of the administration, co-sponsors, fund.
This bill has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee. We will now move on to resolutions of the City Council. Before doing that, I want to briefly recognize a former city councilman, Kiefer Mitchell is in the House. Good to see you, sir. Appreciate you for joining us. We will now move on to resolutions of the City Council. Madam Clerk.
City Council Resolution 25-0030R, task force on residential facility licensing, for the purpose of establishing the task force on residential care facility licensing, to study and make recommendations to the Department of Consumer Protection and Business Licensing for a clear and forcible and comprehensive framework for licensing and regulating residential care facilities in the city. Establishing the members of the task force and requiring a report of findings and recommendations to be submitted to the mayor and city council. Lead sponsor Torrance, co-sponsors Middleton, Gray, Bullock, Blanchard, Jones.
Chair recognizes, Councilman Torrance.
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. I bring this resolution forward because we've been doing a lot of work jointly with Chair Woben Porter to examine the impact of residential care facilities, PRP programs, and we want to basically put people at the table to discuss what does it look like to license the actual facility, how are we sure that there is quality of care, but also that there are protections for the residents who are in those facilities. I believe wholeheartedly as someone who is the son of two persons who suffer from substance abuse, a person who has two facilities in his neighborhood, one down the street from him, they are my neighbors, and I want to make sure my neighbors are giving the proper health care, the proper support they need to live in place and live in our neighborhoods. This will allow us to create a license, that way that we can make sure that we only have good actors and not persons looking to make a profit margin on the backs of persons who are most vulnerable. With that being said, I would like to bring practitioners, Department of Health, Health Department here, DCHD and others together, let's think through what common sense approaches to create a license that allows us to do this correctly, and esteem our neighbors and allow them to live in our neighborhoods, but also make sure good actors are there for them.
Thank you, Councilman Torrance. This resolution has been assigned to the Housing and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Resolution 25-.
Please add Councilmember Porter as co-sponsor.
City Council Resolution 25-0031R, informational hearing, middle school sports, for the purpose of inviting representatives from Mayor Brandon M. Scott's administration, the Baltimore City Public School System, the Department of Recreation and Parks, and the Baltimore Children and Youth Fund to appear before the City Council to, one, provide an update on current sports programs for middle school age children, and identify which programs are being administered by city agencies, schools, and contractors; two, present a recap of middle school sports program availability in the previous three years, and a projection for opportunities over the next three years; three, identify opportunities for stakeholders to collaborate and increase the number of programs available in the future; and four, better define the roles these city agencies hold in middle school sports, and further identify ways in which they can engage middle school children in sports programs and opportunities. Lead sponsor Blanchard, co-sponsors Middleton, Gray, Jones, Ramos.
Chair recognizes Councilmember Blanchard. Please add Councilmember Bullock as co-sponsor. Chair recognizes Councilman Blanchard.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's almost cliche to talk about the incredible value that sports have for young people. It keeps kids in schools, it keeps their grades up, it gives them something to aspire to, it gives them role models, it gives them just something to be excited about every day, and not just in the city, but really in the state of Maryland. The middle school sports investments have always been strikingly lacking within schools. As part of city schools' really significant investment over the last several years in extracurriculars, a major portion of that has been in middle school sports. We've seen a very large expansion, both sports run by city schools, as well as sports coordinated by vendors through city schools, and this is, honestly, I think it's one of the better stories that we're seeing in city schools, and it's having kind of the exact outcomes you'd expect it to have. So there are some things that need to be ironed out, the role of the Baltimore City Children Youth Fund playing in that, et cetera, but all in all, I think this is a very positive direction that city schools are moving in, and look forward to, something that Chair Bullock and I have been talking about for five or six months now, and looking forward to shining a spotlight on it and digging into it sometime soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Blanchard. This resolution has been assigned to the Education, Youth, and Older Adults Committee.
City Council Resolution 25-0032R, safety standards for micro-mobility devices and batteries, for the purpose of declaring the City Council's support for comprehensive safety standards for all micro-mobility devices and batteries manufactured, distributed, sold, or offered for lease or rent within Baltimore City, and calling on manufacturers, distributors, sellers, and lessers of these devices to voluntarily adhere to specified safety standards. Lead sponsor Cohen, co-sponsors Middleton, Gray, Jones, Ramos.
Micro-mobility, excuse me, micro-mobility devices like electric scooters and bikes are becoming increasingly widespread, and the benefit to our residents are many. However, now is the time for us to take proactive measures to address the fire safety risks that can come from low-quality batteries. This resolution simply says that we should move toward a voluntary compliance standard for batteries certified by Underwriters Laboratories. Members, if you look on the back of your laptop, you'll see a UL logo in a circle, or at least you should. Underwriters Laboratories certifies batteries and electronics of all types, and it is the gold standard for safety. Now, I move to suspend Rules 3-7 for immediate adoption of this resolution. Without objection, Rule 3-7 will be suspended. The rule is suspended. I move the resolution for adoption. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Dorsey.
Yes.
Schleifer.
Yes.
Middleton.
Yes.
Torrance.
Aye.
Gray.
Aye.
Bullock.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Blanchard.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Ramos.
Aye.
Aye. This motion is approved. This resolution has been adopted. The consent calendar was sent to members' inboxes in the Desk's document folder. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar? All those in favor of approving the consent calendar say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The motion carries, and the consent calendar is approved. There are no bills on second reader tonight. We now move on to bills on third reader. Madam Clerk, please read the, Councilman Dorsey. I see.
Mr. President, I move that we.
Read short titles for the remainder of the meeting.
So moved. Any objection to reading short titles for the remainder of the meeting? I don't know why we didn't have that in the script. Good catch. Hearing no objection, we will move to short titles for the remainder of the meeting. Thank you, Councilman Dorsey. There are no bills on second reader tonight. We now move to bills on third reader. Madam Clerk, please read the bills and call the roll.
City Council Bill 25-0020, zoning, conditional use conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to three dwelling units in the R8 zoning district, variances 2001 West Baltimore Street. Parker, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Gray, Bullock, Porter, Blanchard, Jones, Glover, Ramos, Cohen.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 25-0037, zoning, conditional use conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to three dwelling units in the R8 zoning district, variances 1727 McCullough Street. Parker, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Gray, Bullock, Porter, Blanchard, Jones, Glover, Ramos, Cohen.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 25-0041, zoning, conditional use conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to three dwelling units in the R7 zoning district, variances 2628 Edmondson Avenue.
Chair recognizes Councilmember Bullock. Are you good?
Gotcha.
Is there a floor amendment? Chair recognizes Councilmember Bullock.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Yes, there was a minor technical amendment that was adjusting the square footage.
Okay. Do you want to move the amendment?
Yeah.
Move the amendment.
All right. All those in favor of adopting this amendment say aye.
Aye.
Let's try that again. All those in favor of adopting this amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Those opposed say nay. The amendment is adopted. Madam Clerk, please call the roll on the amended bill for final passage.
Parker, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Gray, Bullock, Porter, Blanchard, Jones, Glover, Ramos, Cohen.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 25-0049, release of access easement, vehicular access to US Route 40 through 6709 Pulaski Highway. Parker, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Gray, Bullock, Porter, Blanchard, Jones, Glover, Ramos, Cohen.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 25-0053, rezoning, 4001 East Baltimore Street. Parker, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Gray, Bullock, Porter, Blanchard, Jones, Glover, Ramos, Cohen.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 25-0054, zoning, W2 overlay district amendment. Parker, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Gray, Bullock, Porter, Blanchard, Jones, Glover, Ramos, Cohen.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 25-0057, sale of property, 5401 Mason Lord Drive. Parker, McCray, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Gray, Bullock, Porter, Blanchard, Jones, Glover, Ramos, Cohen.
This bill is approved. And now committee announcements. Chairs, when you hear your committee, please proceed with your committee announcements. Budget and appropriations, Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. The previously announced hearing for the Budget and Appropriations Committee for Tuesday, August 26, 2025, at 9:00 a.m., has been rescheduled for Tuesday, September 16, 2025, at 9:00 a.m. in the council chambers to reconvene the hearing on City Council Bill 25-0001, quarterly budget briefings with the Bureau of the Budget and Management Research, the Department of Planning, and the Baltimore City Public Schools.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Education, Youth, and Older Adults, nope, Housing and Economic Development, Chair Torrance.
Colleagues, bear with me. We have about 12 announcements. So here it is, Housing, Economic Development. We will be hearing Bill Number 250014R, which is informational hearing vacant and abandoned garages, sponsored by Vice President Middleton. That will be held on September 30 at 5:00 p.m. Also, on September 30 at 5:00 p.m., we will be hearing Council Bill 250063, zoning administered transferred to the Department of Planning, also sponsored by Councilwoman Middleton. All right. So colleagues, to give you an idea, I'm about to announce a series of legislative oversight hearings for the Department of Housing and Community Development, which will begin this fall, and the series of the meetings will end in the spring of 2027. The reason why is because we have a lot that's happening with housing in the City of Baltimore, so we have broken this down into 13 subtopics so that we can cover quarterly hearings that are marched out until 2027. So to give you an idea, the first hearing will be the accuracy of VBNs and non-contiguous TIF for the purpose of calling irrelevant city agencies and representatives, as well as third parties, stakeholders, to review and discuss the city's policies around and implementation of the vacant building notices, and then also non-contiguous TIF financing. That will be, that first initial meeting will happen on September 30 of 2025. The subsequent hearings will be December 23, 2025, March 24, 2026, June 23, 2026. In addition to that, we'll also be having.
Wait, Councilman, apologies. Time on those? Give it.
5:15. Apologies. Got it. Also, we'll be having a hearing, informational hearing on permits, which will be, excuse me, October 21, and that will be Council Bill 25003R, and that will be at 5:15 on October 21. All right, back to legislative oversight. We will also have legislative oversight on acquisition strategy and in-room filings for the purpose of calling relevant city agencies and representatives, as well as third parties and stakeholders, to talk about the implementation. Those hearings will begin, as the first initial hearing will be October 21, 2025, and then the subsequent quarterly hearings will be June 20, 2026, April 21, 2026, July 21, 2026. Next will be, and that is at 5:15, sorry, all the legislative oversight hearings will be at 5:15. The next will be legislative oversight hearing on the whole block strategy and disposition timelines. Knowing that we will be going to the market in probably this fall or early next year, wanted to have informational hearings to understand that process. This oversight hearing will initially begin at 5:15 on November 18, 2025, then subsequently on February 17, 2026, May 19, 2026, August 18, 2026, as well. That's why I said bear with me, y'all. Next, we'll have legislative oversight hearings on financing for vacant abandoned properties. Also will be 5:15. The initial hearing will be on January 20, 2026. Subsequently, the quarterly hearings will be April 21, 2026, July 21, 2026, October 20, 2026. Next will be legislative oversight hearing on the Baltimore Vacant Investment Council This will begin at 5:15, subsequently starting on February 17, 2026, with subsequent hearings on May 19, 2026, August 18, 2026, November 17, 2026. Twenty-two more to go. The next will be a legislative oversight hearing on vacant use and vacant land use in resident-led solutions. That will start at 5:15, beginning on March 17, 2026. That will then have subsequent hearings on June 16, 2026, as well as September 15, 2026, and December 15, 2026. The next will be legislative oversight hearing on tax sale reform and vacancy prevention. The subsequent hearing will begin at 5:15 on April 21, 2026, then the subsequent quarterly hearings will be July 21, 2026, October 20, 2026, January 19, 2027. And that concludes all of my announcements, and thank you for bearing with me.
Thank you, Councilmember Torrance. Excited for the series. Labor and workforce, Chair Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have one announcement. On October 1, 2025, at 2:00 p.m., the Labor and Workforce Committee will be hearing Bill Number LO25-0035, Baltimore City Works, for the purpose of inviting labor leaders of those who work within Baltimore City to discuss the status of work, labor, and unions, to identify top priorities and common themes, and to formally launch the City Council's labor agenda. I just feel like when Baltimore. I just feel like when Baltimore's done great, it's when working people have done great, and when we set the agenda for working people, should be with, uh, the input of working people. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Land use and transportation, Mr. Chair Dorsey.
Thanks, Mr. President. Um, I have eight bills to announce hearings for. On September 11th at 10:00 AM, committee will hear Bill Numbers 250064, zoning bulk and yard regulate requirements, and 250065, zoning eliminating off-street parking requirements. On September 18th at 10:00 AM, the committee will hear Building, uh, Bill Number 250062, building code, single exit from residential occupancy. On September 25th, the committee will hear five bills at 10:00 AM. Bill Number 250082, Planned Unit Development Amendment, Under Armour Headquarters. Bill Number 250083, RPP Area 30, Exception, 15 East West Street. Bill Number 250084, city streets closing a six-foot portion of West Saratoga Street, and an alley 10.67 feet wide bounded by Pearl Street, West Saratoga Street, and North Green Street. Bill Number 250085, sale of property, section of West Saratoga Street bounded by Pearl Street, West Saratoga Street, and North Green Street. And Bill Number 250086, city streets closing a portion of North Chapel Street. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Chair Dorsey. Legislative Investigations, Chair Schleifer.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Legislative Investigations Committee will hold, uh, a series of EA hearings, EA 25 dash 0034, on August 28th at 4:30 PM, uh, to hear Stephen Fogelman for a member of the Board of Ethics, followed by EA 25 dash 0035, on August 28th at 2025 at 4:31. Uh, Dr. Melanie Bryant, Director of Office of LGBTQ Affairs, followed by EA 25 dash 0036, on August 28th, 2025 at 4:32, uh, for Kendal Abu Hakim, Bureau Head, Department of Public Works, Division of Solid Waste. And EA 25 dash 0037, on August 28th at 4:33, Stephen Sharkey, Bureau Head, Department of Public Works, a Division of Water and Wastewater. EA 25 dash 0038, on August 28th at 4:34, Matthew Garbark, Director of the Department of Public Works. EA 25 dash 0033, on August 28th, 2025 at 4:35, for the first hearing of Dr. Michelle A. Taylor, Member, uh, Baltimore City Commissioner of Health, uh, followed by, um, 25 dash 00717R at, on August 28th at 4:36 PM, informational hearing of Water for All at the request of Councilwoman Ramos, who only requested it one time. Uh, final announcement is EA 25 dash 0033, on, uh, September 11th at 4:30, Dr. Michelle A. Taylor, Baltimore City Health Commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Schleifer. Public Health and the Environment, Chair Porter.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. Um, we have one committee announcement, um, from the committee. On September 17th at 10:00 AM, the committee will hear an informational hearing, the availability of naloxone in public buildings, Bill Number 25 dash 0005R, for the purpose of requiring the city administrator, commissioner of the Baltimore Health Department, and the Department of General Services to appear before the city council to present an assessment of the city's readiness to comply with the provisions of Chapter 764 of the Acts of the Maryland General Assembly of 2024, Emergency Services Automated External Defibrillator and Naloxone Colocation Initiative, Requirements for Public Buildings by Updating Its Health and Safety Protocols for All City Buildings. Sponsor Conway. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Madam Chair. Public Safety, Vice Chair Blanchard, on behalf of Chair Conway.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, no announcements for public safety.
We now move to regular announcements. Members, please wait to be recognized to make any regular announcements. I'd like to begin by requesting a moment of silence for the passing of Mr. Samuel Jordan. I encountered Samuel in his role as founding president of the Baltimore Transit Equity Coalition. He led the coalition in filing a complaint after our former governor canceled the shovel-ready Red Line project in 2015. And while Samuel saved his harshest words for our former governor, he let none of us off the hook in his ever-precise speech and fierce advocacy for the Red Line, high-quality transit, and economic development. I'd also like to recognize Minister Glenn Smith, and the members of the Baltimore Transit Equity Coalition, who have joined us this evening, Morgan Rouse, and staff from the Innovative Housing Institute, Yolanda Takishian, and Samuel's friends and family in attendance and watching online tonight. Samuel was excited about and believed in the work of this body in the 74th term of the city council. He was sitting front and center at our swearing-in. Samuel should have lived to see the completion of the Red Line. In his memory, we will continue to fight for the Red Line and all the transit investments that Baltimoreans deserve. Any other regular announcements for this evening? Councilman Dorsey.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I want to thank Becky Witt for her service to the city. Uh, Becky is moving on from the zoning, uh, board where she has been, uh, an excellent executive director. Um, now, if Richard Crumrich were here, um, he'd correct me if I'm wrong in what I say next, that in the entire history of the city zoning board, I think there have only ever been three permanently appointed directors before her. Uh, three men who held the position for very, very long periods of time. Becky, to my knowledge, is the first woman to have ever held this position as a permanent, uh, executive director of the zoning board, um, where Katie Byrne was never a permanent, uh, she was a placeholder. Katie Byrne was there, um, filling in after David Tanner left and some other, uh, temporary folks, uh, but, but, you know, uh, nothing on Katie's service. Katie did a wonderful service to the city. Um, but, uh, you know, just, I think Becky has done an exceptional job in, uh, assisting the board in going through, uh, kind of some different, uh, some difficult, um, assessment of what the zoning board does and how it does it, and to, uh, standardize it and to make it, uh, more compliant with the laws. And then, when people don't like the outcomes, to help us, the city council who makes those laws that the zoning board carries out, to understand our own laws better and how we can improve them if we don't like the outcomes of the laws that we create. Um, Becky, I feel like, has been an exceptional partner, um, in that role, and, um, I, I'm sorry that she is moving on, but it's understandable to, to just, um, uh, want to do good work where she's going next, and, um, and it's hard work here, and so I'm just really thankful for the work that she's done. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Dorsey. Other regular announcements, Councilmember Ramos.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I'm asking for, uh, two moments of silence for constituents and neighbors that we lost in the last couple of weeks. Uh, the first is Laura Meilik. Uh, she lived in Better Waverly and was a phenomenal leader in the community. She was also a former educator, and if you would believe it, she never used email or a cellphone, but she knew how to communicate with everybody, uh, and she was always in the community, uh, doing a lot of great work, so we will definitely miss her, uh, in our district. Um, the second is Ann Blumberg. Ann Blumberg was the founder of the Community Law Center, uh, and she was one of the first to scream, yell, and plead for action on vacant and abandoned properties, and she created the law center initially to try to do the work that needed to be done to help neighbors, uh, with that, but also started to work on, you know, liquor board and so many other things. Uh, so she's a trailblazer, and we're very much going to miss her. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Ramos. Councilman Torrance.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to recognize Anthony Robinson, longtime civil rights attorney, and also longtime servant leader to the city of Baltimore. Um, Mr. Robinson is a member of the Ashburton community and lived two doors up from me. He had untimely pass about two weeks ago. Um, his actually, his father turned 100 years old last week. So there's a long lineage there, but he was a longtime advocate and was a former director for Minority Affairs and Minority Businesses for the city of Baltimore.
Thank you, Councilman Torrance. Uh, Councilman Gray?
I would like to recognize-
Oh, sir.
There we go. Uh, I would like to recognize Ms. Evelyn Brooks, who is a resident in the Emerson Village neighborhood, who just turned 104 years old, uh, last Thursday. Um, Delegate Ruff and I visited her house, and, um, to believe she's 104 years old, she has the strength of like a 50 or 60-year-old woman, um, in the spirit of a 20-year-old. And so, it was great listening to her, learning her stories. Um, she says she was the first server at, I'm gonna butcher this name, WT Harland, which was a, um, former, a department store. She was the first black server and became the best server, uh, which goes to show, once you let us in the door, um, we're gonna be the best at it. And so, I just wanted to give recognition to her, and, um, a cheers to her, and we will be there for our 105th birthday as well next year, so.
All right. Uh, any other regular announcements? All right, we will observe a brief moment of silence for those that we've recently lost, Samuel Jordan, Ann Blumberg, uh, Anthony, and Anthony Robinson. And Laura Whalek as well. Thank you. In lieu of our district spotlight, I'd like to take a brief moment to honor our Legislative Summer Fellows this summer, Arissa Kamora and Drew Strong. Drew and Arissa did an absolutely outstanding job. Thank you for being with us. I'd also like to recognize, in abstention, the 42 youth workers that the city council hosted in this summer, and all the members and staff who mentored and supported them, uh, also in abstention, but particularly Councilman Glover and Justin and his staff, who alone hosted 23 youth workers. The next regular meeting of the Baltimore City Council will be held on Monday, September 15th at 5:00 PM. There being no further business, this concludes the 13th meeting, uh, 13th regular meeting of the 74th term of the Baltimore City Council.